Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome. We've got a lot of celebrations tonight and some fun things to hear about and learn about. So we'll start off with Dr. Harrell, the Youth Empowerment Program. I think several of us up here have had have had children who've been in the Youth Empowerment Program, so.
Thank you, good evening. It's my pleasure to have with us this evening our longtime supporter and friend, Brian Fogel, president of the Community Foundation. He is here with a group of young adults who's going to be sharing with their Photo Voice project. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian for this presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Justin, very much.
It's a privilege to be here this evening. Our YEP students, this is probably the final presentation publicly. They've been before city council, before the county commission, before the Good Community, and our board as well. The purpose of Photo Voice is to share their view of the community through pictures and through their observations. And it's been a great project. These are your students that are here, and they're here to share. So to introduce them, Bridget Dirks, who is our director of the Youth Empowerment Project, will do that. Thanks again for letting us come this evening.
Is it true that Bridget is the true brains behind the operation?
(laughing)
I think so.
So today, we have some students from Springfield Public School System that are going to talk to you about their Photo Voice project. I'm not going to take away much of the talking because they're ready to go and they have all the useful information, but I'll go ahead and introduce. We have Alex from Bailey, Stephanie from Hillcrest, and we have Ashley and Julia from Kickapoo. I've briefly forgotten her name, sorry. Julia? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and get started. Can you show me where it is? It's gone.
Is it on?
It's gone, yeah. Is it okay if I just go ahead and start it back up again?
Uh huh.
Yeah, okay. One, seven. Well, you guys could go ahead and start talking about Photo Voice while I'm logging in, if you want to get started, Stephanie.
Okay. First of all, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to allow us to come and share our project with you. This has been a very long drawn out process, and we put a lot of hard work and effort into this. Youth Empowerment Project, or YEP for short, is simply put, a group of youth philanthropists. There's, it consists of two to four students from each Springfield Public School, high school. We meet once a month, and one of the major things we do is talk about community service projects and then participate and some, and find out how we can participate in other non-profit organizations. Last year, we went and donated, volunteered our time at the food bank. We put together different packages of just canned and non-perishable foods. And then this year, we volunteered some of our time at the Springfield Creamery and helped hang up some of our photos from our project, and that was a really good time. One of the other things we do in YEP is give out grants to nonprofit organizations. We, as our school groups, we go out and we find at least a minimum of two different organizations that we feel deserve a little bit of grant money. We come back and we meet with the rest of our YEP group, and we present our organizations and explain what kind of what they're about, what they do, and why we feel that they deserve this grant money. And then we vote and divide up the money to each, a certain amount of organizations, depending on how many we choose we feel that need it, and divide up the money that's given to us by community foundation donors. And our latest project that the Springfield YEP has done is our Photo Voice project. Photo Voice is pretty much just a big group of photos that are used to send a message. And Photo Voice is unique because pictures can speak to people in ways that words can't. You might have a message that you want to give to someone, but you might not be able to find the right words to say it. But photos can resonate in different people in different ways. What one picture might mean to me might mean something different to you. That's what makes it so unique and really effective. What we did was each school group, we went out, we had one month to take pictures just around Springfield of things we do not, do and do not like about Springfield that would make us want to stay after high school or maybe leave for college and come back. And what we did was we put together individual projects within our school groups, presented them to the rest of the YEP, and then we met a couple times and combined it into one big project based on correlating things and ideas that we all agreed on. And this is our final result. Just to get right into it, something that all of our groups individually agreed on was we really, really enjoyed our natural environment. We felt it was such a nice break from Springfield's urban environment and everything that happens with our busy everyday lives. We really loved our greenway trails, our parks, our, you know, Sequoia and Nathaniel Green Nature Center, things of that sort. And we felt it was just an escape. We really loved it. We would really like to continue seeing our parks continue to grow and thrive and evolve and be taken care of. Okay, something that we all agree that we did not like about Springfield was the numerous amount of vacant buildings and homes because you can see it all over town, just empty buildings that once were useful and had a purpose and were serving our town, but now they're just left alone and nothing is done with them. We've kind of noticed how it makes our communities and our neighborhoods look like we don't, it looks like we don't care about them. We neglect them. We just leave them there to rot and go to waste. We've kind of noticed a donut effect happening that as Springfield is branching out, kind of all these new companies and buildings and organizations branching out, we've kind of left the center alone, just neglected it, and now it's just sitting there useless. And we feel that it could, all these buildings and homes could be used for useful purposes, whether it's coming up or using the space for different organizations, companies that would offer more job opportunities. Because I know as teenagers, it can be hard for us to find jobs competing with the adults around Springfield. So that would put more opportunities for jobs. And also, one of the problems we noticed around Springfield was homelessness, growing, being a growing issue. And it didn't really make sense to us how, that is such a big issue that's rising, and we have all these buildings that are just sitting there that could be used as shelter for them, especially for people that have to endure the crazy Missouri weather and how it could be six degrees one day and the next day it could be low freezing and snowing. So we feel that all this space could be used for something purposeful rather than just left alone until it runs. One of our big pluses was our locally owned businesses around Springfield. It definitely helps with our economy, and it keeps the money local. Instead of like sending boys to big companies like Walmart and different things, keeps the money local. And it just, it also gives us something like, like that came from Springfield, and it shows kind of like how proud, how proud we can be that that started here. One kind of interesting thing is every single school brought back a picture of Chinese food.
(laughing)
But it's definitely interesting to see how much our youth actually cared about the locally owned businesses.
Yeah, high schoolers really love cashew chicken.
All right, sorry. Graffiti was one of the one things we didn't like about Springfield. It's not a common thing we see, but when we do see it, we think of it as an eyesore and something that could be problematic. It could be turned into something good, but most of the time, we see it as something bad, and we just want to see maybe, I know the city tries to cover it with paint, but you're always going to have those kids that come around and deface the property just because they feel like they need to. It wasn't a big thing that we saw. It was just few schools brought these in, but mainly on the north side of town, we saw that. And it's something that we could easily change and just keep it off the streets because nothing, no one really wants to see all the symbols that no one knows what they mean, so that's just a little thing we didn't like about Springfield. Um, our library students was a big plus that we all brought in. They, they have them all around Springfield. Mainly, kids go there because they don't have the internet access at school, or they go there because they need to research. They have really great reading programs for the students. I know during the summer, when I was a kid, I used to do the summer reading programs. I could get the booklets and have all those fun activities they offer. You also have the books that you can check out, and you can go there as like a safe place if you don't have anywhere to go after school and you can go hang out there and use the computers and make the books. So that was a plus that we liked about Springfield.
Something else that we did like about Springfield was all the examples of public art. The public art around Springfield, it, it's very unique, and it's something that we can have pride in because you won't find the same piece of art in any other place but Springfield. It's something that's become familiar and kind of noticed that it's sort of an equal opportunity if you think about it because, for one, the artists responsible for these masterpieces, it gives them an opportunity to express themselves and show their, kind of take their view on different subjects, and just kind of, it's their way to like, get back to the community. And for those of us that pass by and see the art, it gives us something to look at. Not only does it, is it something beautiful to make our city unique, but also it could change our viewpoint or how we look at something, something we wouldn't normally think about, no matter what the subject of the piece. It could change our view on something, or just, it's just something, uh, uh, I don't even know. It's something for us to look at. And what we like is the diversity of all the arts, how it's not all the same theme around Springfield. We have examples of art from the past and present. There's examples of modern art, and there's examples of religious art, too. So it's something else that, no matter what kind of themes or ideas you like, it's something that everyone around Springfield can enjoy. While we do like the public art a lot, what we do not like is the access that we have to it is very limited. Like you can see in this picture with the chain link fence, something that might be blocking us from the public art, would might be construction, or the green vines that you see growing up the cracks in the wall or the buildings that are left alone, how those masterpieces that once were something beautiful and that we took pride in, we just kind of left alone. So we'd like to see more access to the art for the public. And we'd like to see it maintained, the paint maintained, like make sure it's fresh or taken care of and make sure that those little green vines that we all see growing up, like in the buildings within the paintings or what, whatnot, like to see that maintained and taken care of and just, uh, yeah. Uh, we have a huge variety of events here in Springfield, which was a huge plus for us. From Hammons Fields to JQH, and even just like the small things. But it definitely brings in people from other surrounding towns as well, brings more money in to our local economy. It also gives us something to do, like family events. Instead of staying in the house all booked up, we can all go out and enjoy these things together. But there's no, everybody always says that there's not a lot to do in Springfield, but we are thankful for the things that we do have. Something that was definitely a negative was littering. Not only is it a big eyesore, but it's very disrespectful to our community. Oh my goodness, I just lost what I was wanting to say. Um, we really appreciated our adoption of street programs to help keep the littering to a minimum. And not a lot of, a lot of people expect our youth to really not like littering because it seems like it is a growing problem, but we definitely don't like it. It doesn't make our community look well. It's really bad for our environment. It just, it's not a good thing. We'd really like to see more programs helping with that. Our opportunities for youth was another good thing that we all saw. It definitely brings kids in. Like our Youth Empowerment Project, it brought all of us together that we normally wouldn't have a chance to meet. And it brings kids from the surrounding schools that normally don't get together, and brings them together, and kind of takes away from that rivalry from schools. And there's, there's tons of things, from music to sports, to even more education. Especially with the, like the Ozart and the local community college, like bringing them in, giving them more of a chance. Like I know a lot of kids wouldn't, haven't gotten as far as they did if they didn't have this opportunity, except they do have now. This topic was a little bit of a mix. While we really, really appreciate our transitional living programs and our rare breed, everything that helps our homeless, teen homelessness is on the rise. We would really like to see more branch out across our community to help that. As mentioned before, there's many empty buildings here in Springfield. We would really like to see those buildings going towards used for help for homelessness. It just seems really sad that we have to deal with all this homeless, especially in the school system, as you guys know. And you guys are doing a lot for it with the clothing bank and the vouchers, but it's still a very big growing problem. We would like to see more help for homelessness in Springfield community.
That concludes our Photo Voice for tonight. As you can see, we do have more pluses about Springfield than we do negatives. We like the locally owned businesses, library centers, everything people has to offer. The negatives are just things we could easily fix in Springfield. And all those pictures are taken by the students from high schools around here. Do you guys have any questions about our presentation?
I just have a couple comments. I really appreciate hearing your perspective. And as we get ready to consider the possibility of building new space, new facilities, I think it's interesting for me to hear what's important to you. You know, you know, maybe our school site should have a more park-like setting, you know, or have that kind of opportunity for students. You know, the idea of having public art at each of our sites has, you know, has an interest to me. So I think you've brought up some really good insight and some opportunities for us as a governmental entity that has some control over, you know, a large amount of real estate in this town and how it's presented. I've been, I've been taken back by the litter when I've gone by some of our high schools. And so I hope that maybe your influence there can help your peers realize the importance of what they do impacts our community. But thank you for bringing those all out. I think that was great.
And I don't know who wants to answer this, but I just have a question. What motivated you to become involved in this program? And I guess in YEP. Stephanie, is that correct? Are you Stephanie? Do you want to answer that?
To become part of YEP?
Yes, how to become involved?
Well, whenever the, last year's seniors had come to me about joining YEP for my junior year, I didn't know much about it, and at first, I was like, I don't know if I want to get involved. It's just another thing I have to worry about my plate. And for my first junior, for my junior year, I was like, this is kind of cool. But like, now that I look back, I don't regret joining it because not only has it given me an opportunity to learn, or like, kind of, like for opportunities like this, I would have never thought about aspects about Springfield, stuff like this that do kind of bother me. And like, I really appreciate the opportunities, wanting to come before, I think this is our fourth presentation, different groups to present the youth's view about Springfield. And I like all the community service opportunities that we do and the grant process. At first, I was so confused, and I was so stressed out. But now that I've got it down and I've realized what a big impact it has, I'm really glad that it's something that I could be a part of as well.
And to add on to that, YEP has definitely opened my eyes to want to do more, like continue with philanthropy throughout after high school and throughout college and life, so it's definitely interesting to me, I think, all of us.
So are you going to stay here? I mean, that's what this is all about.
It is.
Put them on spot.
Well, maybe, we don't, we don't always ask that they stay here, but a part of Youth Empowerment Project is encouraging students to return after college. I think that's what YEP, our group has planned to do in college, colleges here in town. That was something that we mentioned we like about Springfield, that we do have so many colleges available.
Yes.
So we have quite a choice if we want to stay close to home, so.
And how many of you are eighteen and registered to vote? You are empowered, and the rest of you may bestow that empowerment on your parents and your grandparents and your relatives and your friends, because there's a vote on April second that has the potential to influence Springfield as we look for more tax money to build more schools and to hire more teachers and provide, to provide internet access. And tomorrow's the last day to register to vote, so. Good. Thank you all very much. Very good presentation. Dr. Hackenworth, I believe you're up.
Thank you for taking time away from your homework.
Hit, hit.
Good evening. The Missouri Association of Elementary School Principals is the state organization that most of our elementary principals belong to. It is an organization that is roughly over a thousand members, elementary and some K. A. principals statewide. Gives them an opportunity to collaborate, to work with each other, do some professional development across district lines and work on issues, big and small, and also to influence some legislative issues at the Capitol as well. Besides that, they have the honor, the opportunity to honor their outstanding exemplary and distinguished principals. And we have three of our frontline entrenched principals that have, are being recognized at the upcoming state conference this weekend for their exemplary outstanding and distinguished service. And so I'm going to bring them up one at a time to share what they are being recognized for. And we certainly appreciate them. And in order to receive this honor, there's just basically a long list of awesomeness, for lack of a better word, that they have to demonstrate to their peers and go forth. And so we will first start with Shannon Bossing. Shannon, if you will come forward. Shannon is here with her husband and two sons, I believe. Shannon, welcome out. Shannon is the assistant to the principal at Twain and Disney Elementarys. And what's amazing about her is her instructional focus that she adds to both of the staffs at those sites. And we certainly appreciate her. Next is Stacy Manlove at Twain. Stacy, come on up. Stacy is the exemplary new principal, and for that, I think it's serviced three to five years or less and just doing a stand-up job there. And what I love about Stacy is the common sense that she brings to this job. And that's not something you can necessarily teach, but we hope to master that, so. And then we have Chris Mendel at Harrison Elementary. And Chris, if you'll join us up here. Chris is nominated as a Missouri, and is going to receive the honor of a Missouri distinguished principal. And her expectations around continuous improvement at Harrison are simply amazing. So they, besides being honored this weekend, one of the, one of the honors that they get is to complete with deplorable banquet food.
(laughing)
But other than that, they're going to have that opportunity to be recognized in front of all of their peers statewide. And so if you have any questions for them at this time, certainly turn the time to you for that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. It's pretty impressive. And, you know, this is what we sit up here and try to, we appreciate, because we've tried to provide the resources, we tried to give you the curriculum that you need and the support that you need. And when we can see results like this, it makes our job all worthwhile. So congratulations.
Now, to my understanding, you have some leadership role in this association?
Yes, I do. Currently, I serve as a president-elect for MASP.
That's what I thought, right.
So the good news is I didn't do any selection, although I would wholeheartedly endorse the selection of this person.
No, I just wanted, I just want to make sure people understood that you have been serving Springfield and this association very well across the state. So thank you for that.
You bet. Thank you. I also have the opportunity to recognize our next guest, and that's Marsha Mitchell. And if Marsha will come up here. Marsha is the art teacher at Delaware and Wilder Elementarys. And she has been selected as the Missouri Art Education Association Teacher of the Year. And that is just a fantastic honor for her. One of her principals, as she's at different sites, is Dr. Steingraber, who's here with us. And what he said about her is that she has such high expectations that are just beautifully crafted, but she also engineers the opportunity for those students to meet that expectation. And so the students walk away feeling successful with every one of her classes every day, and we certainly appreciate that. Marsha is here with her husband Larry, who's in the back. And so any questions or comments that you have for Marsha at this time?
Impressive. For most of us who have no artistic ability, can't even think of doing what she does.
I lived with my work for the last year.
Oh, is this?
Yep, that's, that's pretty neat.
Do you have a favorite artist, by the way?
I'll leave Van Gogh, yeah, which is what we have on the wall.
Great. We, we also have some of your artwork in our School Board Association's Board of Directors Room. So we've, so we have a lot of your artwork around the state.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
And thank you for honoring our teachers and principals. We appreciate your support. Pam?
Good evening. In January, we completed our, the 2011 P2G Conference, and that is made possible through our community support. And we have a couple of our P2G sponsors, and I'd like for them to come up. From the Springfield Council of PTAs, Mary Cristiano is here. And we'd like to give her a certificate and thank her for her appreciation, for support of our P2G Conference. And then Gwen Hager with Great Southern, Community Relations Manager for Great Southern is here. And if you would just show your support of their support by a round of applause. And they were able to attend our conference as well for the opening, and we're going to share that with you in just a moment. Kathy Yellen and I co-coordinate the conference, and Kathy's going to share with you some of the specifics of the conference.
I just wanted to share with you a few details from the conference this year. We had approximately 250 people attend, and that was administrators, teachers, counselors, people from the various departments, our sponsors. And we had representatives there from every building and from each of the instructional support services departments. One of the highlights of the conference is our ability to capitalize on our own expertise, and that happens through the breakout sessions. This year, we had 26 breakout sessions, and those were presented by teachers, administrators, and department staff from 18 of our buildings and three of the departments. The unique thing about our breakout sessions this year was that each of the breakout sessions was aligned to one of the four processes of the SPS learning model. And now Pam's going to share with you some of the presentation from the large group sessions.
Our large group session, we had an opening video, which was featured elementary students and talking about how children have big dreams. And one of the parents talked with me about a week ago and said that they were in a restaurant, and the waitress said to her daughter, said, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" And she goes, "I don't know, but I've got big dreams."
(laughing)
So if we could, if we could instill that in our elementary kids, that they have big dreams, then I think we would eliminate the dropout rate, because kids know that they would need the education to be able to reach their dreams. And so I'm going to share that video with you. Then Dr. Goodman shared with us the statistics, and that was a highlight because our graduation rate has skyrocketed over the last six years in, with the P2G efforts. And then finally, we had a video that highlighted students that were at risk of dropping out and that they were going to be and that they were going to be successful graduates this year. And so I have that video that I could share with you later at another time, but it was very touching. And the bottom line was the relationships that kids had with people in their school, whether it was another student, or a teacher, or a CSI, or CSIs that support those students who are at risk, have made a huge impact on students. So I'd like to share with you the video at this time.
I'm Jordan Cook, and I have big dreams.
I'm Cooper Norman, and I have big dreams.
I know I have big dreams.
My name is Heidi, and I have big dreams.
I'm Delma, and I have big dreams.
My name is Cameron Anderson, and I have big dreams.
I'm Shabaya, and I have big dreams.
I'm Shabaya, and I have big dreams.
I'm Shabaya, I got big dreams.
My name is Wilson, and I have really, 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 really big dreams.
When I grow up, I want to be a layer of the air.
My name is Mario, I got big dreams.
I'm Sam Wallace, and I have big dreams.
When I grow up, I want to be a chef.
When I grow up, I want to be an artist and paint pictures.
I'm Justin, and I have really, really, really big dreams.
When I grow up, I want to be a marine biologist, or a marine prisoner, or a marco shark.
When I grow up, I want to work with small animals.
When I grow up, I want to be an oil technician.
When I grow up, I want to be a chemist, because I want to engineer.
I want to be a veterinarian when I grow up.
When I grow up, I want to be a zookeeper and take care of the goats.
When I grow up, I want to be my generation's Steve Jobs.
Thank you so much for your support of P2G.
I'm Jordan Cook, and I have big dreams.
And you're going to get to see it again, I guess.
I'm Cooper.
I'm Jordan Cook, and I have big dreams.
Some dreamers.
I'm Jordan Cook, and I have big dreams.
Thank you. We do have a big job with big dreams, don't we?
Great. Thank you very much.
She ran off really fast.
Pam, we got to.
You're not going to get off that easy. I know this is pretty much focused on Springfield Public Schools. Is this something that could be transferable, duplicatable, whatever the right word is, to provide for other districts, maybe, that can't do it for themselves? Because your track, the track record we've got is incredible. And I know other districts who may or may not have the resources, opportunity, or people to do that. Is, I mean, is this something that could be, for no better term, put on the road?
It is, and we've had people ask that. The problem is, is the facilities, to be able to get a facility large enough to be able to accommodate that. Even this year, we had to limit how many people got to come from Springfield. So it would be an additional event, and it would be, you know, by invitation and, and registration.
I mean, could we go somewhere to do it?
We could.
I know that that's, I'm taking you out of the building and that kind of thing. I don't, because I know districts are incredibly interested in this.
Right.
But they don't have the resources to do it themselves, and let them network, and we all got the same goals.
We've, we've been dreaming and thinking about things, and sometimes in the summer is better, because, because our presenters are our own staff.
Right.
We would have to do it during a time that we weren't in school.
I mean, it's incredible information.
Yeah, it really is.
So I, I just think it's something that would be good to provide other districts, or let them share in that also, is best practices, so.
Absolutely.
You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're going to take some strategic discussion time and learn about sequestration.
Yeah, the main reason we're doing this is just to follow up on the lack of action, I guess is the best way to say it, on Friday, and just to kind of give the board a heads up, as well as the community, as to how it's impacting our title program. So with us right now is Brian Hubbard. So Brian, if you would.
Good evening. Let me get the PowerPoint started. Okay, and I'm mainly going to talk about the federal programs here in Springfield Public Schools, and how the sequestration would affect us. Here's the definition of sequestration for anyone that needs it, or hasn't heard about it in the news lately. Basically, it's automatic spending cuts to our federal funds, and it went into effect March second, or March first, right after midnight, I believe. And it's basically due to the failure of the Congressional Joint Select Committee to reduce the deficit. Even though they did, sequestration took effect March second, it won't impact our federal programs in Springfield Public Schools until the next fiscal year. The estimated reductions will be approximately 5.3 percent. I watched a webinar from DESI just last week, and they estimated 5.1, so I think that's probably a safe bet for this coming year.
The total of 5 percent reduction of our total?
Of our, of our coming budget.
Federal.
Federal, right.
Federal.
From the federal.
Just the federals. For Title I, you can see the estimations here, actually for all the different title programs that it will affect. Title I, of course, is our, our main title program, the one that gets the most funding for students that have, have the most need. 340,000, which would translate, if you just looked at a full-time employee, to around seven teachers, and up to 15 paraprofessionals. Title I D, which is our Neglected and Delinquent Grant, would be around $9,000. Title II, which we use for class size reduction and professional development in the district, will be approximately 60,000, which would translate into one class size reduction teacher. Title III, 5,500. And across the board, this would result in the, a reduction in the amount of materials, services, perhaps staffing for each program. Okay, specifically to Title I, as you know, we, we wait for our budget each year. Some years, we get it earlier than others. They are planning on mid-April for this coming year's budget. For large districts, which we're a part of, greater than 20,000 students, it's based solely on census poverty data from the previous income year. Okay, our poverty went up approximately 3 percent for census poverty. That's a good thing for our funding. NCLB law requires the use of that census data. Now, the state of Missouri is actually up approximately 3 percent as well for that poverty census. But DESI believes that the state allocation will actually be down approximately 3 million from last year. And that's one of their estimates. That's not, that's not for sure yet. Again, like I said, we, we won't know a, a solid budget until mid-April. And as you know, I've stood up here before you a few times, talking about reduced budgets. Just this last year, we started the budget, the year off with a, a budget reduction of around $900,000. Also, the, the NCLB waiver was in the process of being granted to the state. The state is, as you know, still currently working things out with that. We waited for guidance, and it took a long time, to the point where the 20 percent of funds that normally are used for NCLB sanctions for schools not meeting AYP, for, for transfers, student transfer and tutoring. They freed that money up and gave us flexibility to put that toward the program, I believe in December. So we reallocated funds mid-year, and put a lot of funds toward Wonder Years and back to the schools. And that impacted our staffing, so this year, we started off with around, well, we ended up with around 18 less FTE. And of course, we're serving 20 schools instead of the 24 that we served last year. Now, we did add staff back at mid-year, so these are some of the positions that we did add back. One of the things that came up with adding, with adding staff at mid-year is meeting highly qualified staff requirements of NCLB. And it's very difficult to find teachers with the correct certification in the middle of the year. So that impacted how many staff we would have, we would have normally, if it had, would have been at the beginning of the year, we would have added more, more staff. However, we did add one reading specialist just last week, I believe, and some paraprofessionals, as well as the Wonder Years paraprofessionals and another Wonder Years teacher. Okay, for sequestration, we, we knew at the beginning of this year, they were saying that we, it was a possibility for this current year. Even though we started the year off, they said, "Be ready in January. You might have to give 4.5 percent of your, of your budget back." As you know, it did not happen, but then they said it could happen, and now it has happened. And again, it's going to affect us next year. So we, we met to think about that and look at our budget and what was coming, and we decided to be pretty strategic as far as how much we added back this year mid-year, thinking about the, the sequestration coming up. So we do have a large carryover in anticipation of the sequestration for next year, coming from Title I. The NCLB waiver is more clear, so we, we have those funds at the beginning of the year, that 20 percent I discussed that we really didn't, we weren't able to access until mid-year. We'll be able to access that at the beginning of next year, so that will help out a lot to offset sequestration, as well as the carryover. Staffing was lower than normal at the beginning of this year, because we didn't have the funds freed up. So we aren't, we're, we're 18 staff down, or FTE down. So instead of going into next year with reductions and having to cut staff, I think we'll actually be in okay shape for the situation that we're going to be in, as far as not having to cut staff. Of course, with the amount of money that we might not get, or we won't get now because of sequestration, we won't be able to add like we were, like we were planning. So we have kind of a, the planning that's taken care of some of these things, although we do have the major impact of sequestration on what we can do next year, what we were planning on doing, and the services for, for students. At this time, I'll take any questions that you might have about the impact. One other thing I might add before that is I talked to Amy Krause, Director of Special Ed, and wanted to share the impact on special ed. The Hancock Amendment restricts the sequestration of early childhood special ed dollars being taken away. So they won't have cuts to ECSE, but they will have cuts to the Part B of the special ed funding, which would be for school-aged students, and she anticipates it at around $250,000.
Questions, Ms. Callen?
This could change at any minute, right? I mean, so to say that we're not going to get these funds, we don't know, right? I mean, or to say that sequestration, what we're impacted by now, the scenario could change all the way up even through our budgeting process and into our fiscal year, right? I mean, that's kind of what happened to us last year.
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, I guess that's just the thing that I think we just, I mean, we don't know.
Right, I mean, we hear things in the news about.
This is the case today.
Exactly.
Right.
We, I mean, we're, we're hopeful that they can work things out, but we know that that's, it hasn't happened so far. So sequestration, what I've done, I've done some research, and it looks like it's a seven-year process, seven to 10 years. And so it could be something where we're looking at it long-term. It could be that they come up with some solutions fairly quickly due to outcry from the public about things that are being caught.
And the only other question I have is, those are, I think you outlined four different pots of money, four different programs. Do we need to deal with each of those separately? I mean, are the parameters around how we use that money?
Correct.
So we can't take our total amount of federal programs and, and use that money as we see fit in terms of supporting our students? We're very, it's very prescriptive in terms of where we have to cut and how we have to cut and.
Correct. With each program, there are many guidelines. There, there are opportunities to sometimes use other, other title grants to fund, like Title I to transfer. But it's taking away from one grant that does good for that, the people that receive that, to put towards another grant, so.
I guess I would just, you know, get on my soapbox and say, "This is just another reason why the more local control and local support we can have for our district, the better, because I think this is just only the beginning, just the tip of the iceberg of what's going to happen at the federal and state level." So, you know, I think it's a good message to our patrons to say, "Let's take control," and, you know, maybe we can get to the point where this isn't even an issue for us, you know.
I, I just want to comment, Dr. Ritter, could we get a copy of that, of your slides?
Definitely. I think, I think Kathy has.
I would like to share that statewide, as far as the impact. Second one is, I, I think while we talk about the direct impact that we have, there's definitely, and here depends on what happens and how long, some longer-term impact when you start cutting head start, so we get more kids that aren't prepared for school, and mental health services that we are not available to kids that, that need it, which will impact us directly at some point, but initially indirectly. I, I just think it's, you know, who knows what will happen tomorrow? I mean, they may wake up and do something totally different tomorrow, I don't know. But until somebody's hurting, I don't know if they're going to, I'm not optimistic about it. But I, I just think we need to, while we talk about specifically what is impacting us, I think there's some real significant indirect consequences that's going to impact us long-term, if it continues and goes. So I think we need to be very conscious of that and aware of that.
And one comment, Mr. Hubbard, that you brought out, I think it's important, is that for districts that have over 20,000 students, their allocation is based on census poverty data. And, and the determination of poverty line is much lower than free reduced line. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
So while we may get a certain allocation based on census poverty data, smaller districts get an allocation based on the numbers of students on free and reduced lunch. Is that correct?
They, they use the census poverty as well as the free and reduced lunch rate.
So that's kind of an, an interesting aspect that we deal with in terms of our allocations, based on what other districts get.
Right.
And that's always a.
It's really difficult to predict, and so in mid-April, we'll have more solid numbers to know the, the actual solid impact on what, what's going to happen for next year.
Ms. Callen asked about some of the flexibility we have as a district, and, and, and I guess what I heard from you is that within those pots of money, we do have flexibility to determine how we're going to either make cuts or allocate that money. Is that correct?
Correct. Like in Title I, we have specific programs and staffing that we can use the funds for. And you also can do some transfers of money between title programs.
And before we make that decision as a district, is there going to be a, a presentation to the board as to what the evidence is behind why those decisions would be made?
Like I said, in mid-April, we'll have the more solid budgets, and it would be something I could prepare again and get that information to you, as well as the guidelines, a summation of guidelines, maybe per, per title program.
And, and another, and I've asked this question privately, and I think from the board table as well. Is there, is there data you can show the board of what bang we get for Title I bucks? What, what a student at McGregor gets, a poor student at McGregor gets, that a, a poor student at Twain doesn't get? What the positive impact is on those dollars, and whether there's any way to differentiate? I know we've had, we've had presentations on some of the things that have been put in that have had some remarkable success. But I haven't seen as a board member that kind of piece down of, of what we're getting for extra money in our title schools. So is there, is that something, as we talk about this and going forward, that that can be presented? So, is there, is that something, as we talk about this and going forward, that that can be presented to the board?
I think definitely, we have a lot of different data that we monitor. I think it would just be a matter of having that discussion and making sure that we understand exactly what you're looking for for measurement to be able to present, because we do have a lot of pieces of data that we monitor, both in the OSR, but then also for our individual program.
And I guess I just, you got poor students in schools that don't get any title money, correct?
Correct.
And you got poor students in schools that get title money. I guess as a board member, I would think that somehow that those poor students in those Title I schools should be getting something from that Title I money. And what evidence do we have that says, "Here's what they're getting, and here's the bang we're getting for that money," as opposed to this kid that's not in a Title I school that's just as poor as the kid in the Title I school? Does that make sense?
Sure.
Because I've not seen that, and I've seen bits and pieces, and I've seen programs, and I've seen, you know, individual school scores on different things, but I haven't seen that kind of parceled out.
Right.
So, if we give up eight full-time positions, eight full-time equivalents for sequestration, the money lost there, did you say that you have enough held back in this year's budget that you may or may not have to?
I'm optimistic. Again, until I get the budget in mid-April, I won't know what the state, the actual state budget or the district budget from the state is, because they look at all of the different districts to figure out the percentage for each district. But once I see that, then I should be able to have that answer for sure. But at this point, looking at possible projections as far as even using what we've had in the past, I'm pretty optimistic that we would not need to make cuts. But I hate to say things for sure when we're dealing with this.
The federal dollars flow through a filter at the state level, right?
Exactly, they put some toward us, school improvement, and then they, again, they look at the formulas for the different districts.
I think the point there is, I mean, that's great that you're not making more cuts, because we've already made cuts.
You already made cuts.
Exactly, we're already starting off lower.
Made the cuts already, so it's not like we're not getting hurt by it, we've already made the cuts.
Exactly.
I would just point out that this is probably a conversation that, I'll be gone from this board, but this board will continue to have this conversation this year, next year, and subsequent years, because the federal dollars are going away. And I always, I always, it's distasteful to the discussion that we have to, we speak about our title students, you know, that money comes from the federal government versus what we do locally. And we don't educate federally-funded students, we educate Springfield all students. And it's just a, it's a wake-up call, and I think it's one that this community should embrace, because we do love our local control. And there is opportunity coming up, as Dr. Prater shamelessly promoted about the election that's upcoming. But it's important, and it's meaningful, and this conversation is not going to go away, and it's going to have to be dealt with at the local level to make up the kinds of dollars that are going to be lost over the next seven to 10 years.
This is a 10-year process. I think that's really, really important to people, and we're not talking about one year, we're talking about 10 years. And so, I mean, if nothing happens, we're talking about 10 years' worth of impact. And so, this is not a short-term little blip, this is a trend, potentially.
And not to be scary talk, this is, it's here and it's now, and so, planning for it's good.
Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you.
That's why we had it at this time, it's strategic.
We have no public comments for agenda items. We've got a couple of items that need a vote tonight.
Yes, Mr. White?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Dr. Ritter, it's my pleasure to present to you this action item this evening for boiler replacement projects at both the Wanda Gray Elementary and the Hillcrest High School. The scope of the project entails 18 mini-boilers at Wanda Gray, which are in the original part of the building. Wanda Gray was constructed in 1985. And the boilers at Hillcrest High School, we have five boilers there to be replaced, and those are all 20-plus years of service as well. The project also includes the associated pumps and controls and insulation work to be done with that as well. There were four contractors that bid on this project, the bid tabulation is attached. The project is to be funded with your approval from the major repair budget. The recommendation is that the board would issue a contract to Poindexter Mechanical in the amount of $175,500 for the base bid number one, which is for the Wanda Gray. And the second recommendation, that the board issues a contract to Johnson Controls in the amount of $54,540 for the base bid number two for the Hillcrest project. Mr. Bishop is with us this evening if there are any specific questions for the project.
Questions? Mr. White or Mr. Bishop? I take a motion that the board issue a contract, two contracts as stated. Mrs. Callen, Ms. Twitty, who was it? Twitty?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Callen seconded it. I noticed that Mr. Bishop wanted to spend that money for art on the school grounds. All right. Thank you, and the next one.
This next action item is for work to be done here at this facility, which consists of the renovation of the existing HVAC system, which is serving the data center and that work area around the data center. When we purchased the building here, there were a number of units that we had evaluated, and we did not replace at that time, so, because it appeared we would get several years of service out of those. There are two units here to be replaced. We received bids from three contractors on this project, the bid tabulations attached. MFEC was the engineer for that project. This is another project to be funded for major repair, and the recommendation is that the board issues a contract to mechanical services in the amount of $95,700.
Questions for Mr. White? Take a motion that the board issue a contract to mechanical services in the amount of $95,700 for the HVAC and craft. Mrs. Callen?
Second.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you.
Where's the thermostat going to be?
I don't know if they're related.
We have some items for separate consideration that we will vote on in two weeks. Second reading of board policy, DJB, which was the petty cash account. So, any questions for Mr. Chodas on that? And the curriculum adoption?
Who are we looking at here? Who are these people?
Well, I'm going to introduce them.
Oh, okay. I just thought while we're waiting.
Well, good evening, we're pleased to bring your proposal this evening for the purchase of curriculum resources and materials, which will support our students and teachers beginning next school year. Board policy IIIA directs a review of textbooks and resources available to students and teachers for each curriculum content area in cycles not to exceed seven years. And you'll recall that last month, we brought a proposal for elementary, English, language arts, and at that time, we shared some details about the process, so I won't repeat that part of the presentation tonight. We'll get straight to the resource adoption itself. Tonight, we bring a proposal for middle school and high school mathematics. And again, I'd like to thank the many teachers, parents, community members who served on our district Curriculum Development Council and our Resource Adoption Committees during this extensive curriculum development process, which led to the proposal that you'll see tonight. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and introduce, if that's okay, Dr. Ritter?
Yes, please.
Our curriculum facilitator, Mrs. Ann Wallenmeyer, who will be joined by two of our classroom teachers, Ryan Savage and Stephanie Long, and they'll provide some details about the recommendation for this evening.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to commend the secondary math teachers for their hard work in selecting these products. They spent a lot of time after hours poring through textbooks and making sure that we select the best resources for our students. Not only are these resources aligned to the Common Core state standards for math and mathematical practices, but they also support our students' learning of the learning model, the collaboration, communication, and critical thinking skills that are necessary for them to be ready for careers and college. One of the things that I liked the most about the resources that have been chosen are the multiple levels of support that are provided. If a student has internet access at home, they are able to access all materials online, the videos, everything, so they have that access at home to further their learning, and also for their parents to help them. If they don't have internets at home, there are CDs available that have all of those same materials on them for students to take home. And if they don't have computer access at home, then we have print materials that will be available for students to take home as well, so that we are going to be able to provide students with the differentiation and resources that they need to be successful learners. And then, when the bond passes and we move down our path of one-to-one, these resources are completely ready to be a very crucial element in that process. So, this evening, I would like to introduce Ryan Savage, who is the math department head at Parkview, and he helped with many of the selections and has been using some of the materials in his classroom. And then Stephanie Long, who is an eighth-grade teacher at Pleasant View, has also been using the middle school products for a while. And both of these teachers are going to share with you what these products, what benefits these products have for our students.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the high school teachers and our recommendation for this adoption. One thing that we do like to stress and appreciation is the opportunity for every teacher to have a say and an opportunity for input in this adoption. As a group, we all agree that we consider, we desired a new text that aligned with Common Core, gave opportunity for differentiated instruction to allow for honors and non-weighted courses alike, and also prepared our students for the Smarter Balance type tests and things that are coming down the pipeline with Common Core. And we also wanted something that had the three-tiered, as Annie already mentioned, approach as far as students had access online, students had access just with the computer, and then also there were plenty of print opportunities for our students who don't have computer access. The one text, the one company that will be the bulk of our high school adoption will be from Pearson. One thing that we really, really enjoyed about the Pearson text is they had the online capabilities of, similar to a Khan Academy, if you've heard that reference before, where every single concept that's taught throughout all of the texts is available through a video tutoring session online that's accessible anywhere with an internet connection. One thing that teachers really, really loved about the Pearson option was the availability of all the materials and the fact that they were all, could be modified in a compatible program. Microsoft Word is a program that's available on all of the district computers and a majority of home computers, people have the opportunity to do this. This is an example of an assignment from the Algebra I textbook. You can notice that there are fewer questions that go into greater detail, and that they are also all editable for the teachers to edit as they see fit for their classrooms. One thing that we really enjoyed about the Pearson also is the performance tasks that aligned with released items from Smarter Balanced through DESI, and also a lot of the math strands that we've seen through the Common Core. This is an example of a student critiquing another student's work, actually two students' work, and then determining what they would do in this similar, posed with a similar question. Also, our multiple-choice test bank would help prepare our students for the high-stakes testing. These questions that we've seen in the presentations are very similar to those that we've seen released through DESI and through Smarter Balanced. Also, we felt that the item analysis that the Pearson text offered, where each question was correlated to the exact Common Core strand that they were attempting to determine the level of, would most definitely enhance what we already have as far as the achievement series and the performance series software that we've currently using. The chapter projects is something that's going to be very new to our high school math teachers. Some, we've seen as far as two- to three-day projects that'll require the collaboration and communication with students, and it's something that we need to begin preparing our students for. And we believe that the Pearson text has ample projects for the students as far as one per chapter that are similar to those that require multiple days with research and creating action plans, and then also building in that collaboration and cooperation component. Finally, this adoption with the Pearson text would allow for increased availability for technology for our students. We are also proposing a Texas Intermans adoption at the high school level for TI Inspires, and each chapter has an individual project to do with the TI technology. So, we feel like that's very beneficial for our students. And as Annie alluded to before, as the district moves forward, and we hope to, if and when, see a one-to-one adoption, the Pearson text has ample opportunities for students to be online with this Math XL for school. And it would allow for immediate feedback, homework assignments to be completely online, immediate grading for teachers, and then direct link access to all of the tutoring services that they offer through their website and online. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and hand it over to Stephanie.
Everybody's taking a test.
Pits is broke, I can't.
Yes. Thank you for letting us speak tonight, just to share with you kind of what we've been looking at over the last few months. And I'm really excited about this product. This is something that I've actually been using in my classroom since October and had the ability to kind of work with my students through it and learn a lot about this program. So, our middle school teachers, when we got together, we had very similar reasons, just like the high school teachers did, for selecting this particular resource. We like this program, first off, because this program was not written until after the Common Core and those mathematical practices were written. So, this program is specifically written for Common Core and our mathematical practices. And that was a big deal to us, since our MiGs and objectives that we wrote last year are aligned to the Common Core. I love this program because, as an instructor, I'm always looking for ways to differentiate the instruction and provide personal instruction for my students in my classroom. And I love that this program allows me to do that. As it relates to our learning model, the lessons that I've been presenting with my kids allow them a lot more collaboration. The feedback that I'm getting from them through our lessons is very powerful to me. And even today, walking around the classroom and hearing them discuss between their peers the questions that were presented before them, it was a very powerful moment for me. I really enjoyed hearing their conversations. I also like that this program really works well with our smart boards. And I'm constantly calling the kids up through this program and allowing them to kind of work through some of the problems. So, I actually wanted you to see what the program looks like and what our students would be seeing every day in the classroom when these lessons were presented. So, when we open up the program, the first thing that our students are going to see, nobody jumped, that's good. She did earlier. Our students would have a launch before them, and that's what you see there in front of you, where I would take just a minute to share this problem with them and have them work through their problem individually, so that I know right off where my kids are coming from, what previous knowledge they already have about the topic. And it gives us a really good opportunity to lead into the particular topic that we're going to be talking about that day. to lead into the particular topic that we're going to be talking about that day. As teachers, we write our objectives, we write our why are we learning things? Why are we doing this on our board or on our website every day? I also like that with this program, the next thing that happens is we're able to connect the learning. And so the kids are going to be able to hear the objective stated out loud and the focus question, what we're going to be working with. This brings us to the part where we would typically do our note-taking session, where the kids would have their notes in front of them. Something that I really love about this program is that after the kids do a particular example with me, and I guide them through that, every example has a "got it" problem. And so after the kids and I have worked through this problem together, then it's immediately followed with a "got it" problem. So the kids are able to give me immediate feedback, and I know how we're working through the lesson. Are we getting it, are we not? I can even pull up answer choices and let the kids actually have that practice of selecting from different choices. Something that my kids really are enjoying as we're going through this process is there's a lot of interaction with this program. And as a middle school student, we're always, and as a teacher, I'm always looking for ways to get them engaged in the lesson. And having the videos that come with this program really gets the kids involved. This particular lesson is a lesson that I did with my kids back in December, when we were talking about transformations in class. And I'll just flip through this real quick just to kind of let you see something here. This fine gentleman.
Called the rotation groove. All you need to learn is that the figure must turn about a fixed point. That's a rigid motion, see? As simple as can be. Come on, come on, and move. Do the rotation groove.
So you get the idea. I'm not even working with transformations right now, but every time I bring up a new lesson, the kids ask if the dancing guy is going to be in the video. So it really does draw them into the lesson. And, you know, I can bring them up and have them working out the problems with me on the smart board. It's really been great to have a little bit of practice with this program and to really give it a good try. Each section wraps up with a close-in check, which you also have there in front of you, where it gives me a chance to talk, to bring in some of our mathematical practices. They receive a companion page, and it just lets me know, it answers a few questions for me. Do they really, you know, know what we've covered here? There's always some sort of a reasoning connection. And that right there is a very powerful component to me to know, are my kids ready to go ahead and work, you know, and maybe in pairs or individually on that particular activity? I will say this, that after we've went through the lesson and it's time for us to do some practice, I have the wonderful job of being an Ementz teacher. So I have been an Ementz teacher now for five years, and so I have nineteen computers in my classroom. So just in the last month, with the practice that these kids get with this program, and just like Ryan said, not only do the kids have the access to these, to this presentation, but every presentation also has videos associated with it, like Khan Academy, where the kids can go on if they go home. And if they've forgotten something, they can pull those videos up as well. It's the same company, it's also Pearson. But as an Ementz teacher, like I said earlier, walking around and hearing that collaboration as they're in front of that computer and they're working through the practice problems, just hearing the dialogue and the math vocabulary that they are, you know, getting very comfortable using is really awesome to me and very powerful. For those teachers that are not Ementz teachers, they still have, like was mentioned earlier, if kids have internet at home, then they have the ability to pull these lessons up, to pull the practice up, to pull the videos up. And there's additional videos online from this company. If kids don't have the internet at home, all of the discs that are given to every individual student in Springfield will have the lessons, and the kids can then print a copy of their final product and bring it back to the teacher to turn in. And then finally, for those students that do not have those capabilities yet, we can print out, and I had a kid today who doesn't have, they have an assessment tomorrow, and that student doesn't have the internet at home. She just went on, she printed out a copy of the study guide, and she's using that to study off of tonight. This program also is already iPad-ready, any sort of a digital device. So students even right now can pull this program up on those digital devices and use it and answer the questions from those devices. Just to wrap it up, the last thing I wanted to say is that each of these units, at the very end, there's a problem-solving session. And in that problem-solving section, those questions are really similar to the next-generation questions that we're really trying to get our kids prepared for, and that rigor and the relevance that prepares them to be college and career-ready students. And it's just exciting to be able to, you know, give this program a try already and to see how it's affecting the learning in my classroom. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to share what we've been trying out. Appreciate it.
So with that, we'll make the recommendation that the board approves the recommended instructional resources for the total of seven, or $875,616. And we'd be happy to entertain any questions or clarify anything for you all.
I just want to say, this is, I think, the second curriculum adoption that's come before us. And I've been very impressed with the teachers that have been before us and the enthusiasm. And I thank you for the extra time that this has taken from your day. So what I'm going to say is no criticism to your work. But it may go to, I don't know who's responsible for putting these teams together. But I've been kind of on a bandwagon for the last year or so that when I look at a list of almost a hundred people, there's only one person on there. There are teachers slash parents. But I really think that we need to make sure that we're involving parents more in these kinds of committees. I think we've done a really good job, a much better job than we used to of involving teachers. But I think especially with math, where children are going home and going to get help, hopefully, from their parents for math, well, really, anything. We need to make sure that our patrons also have a comfort level with the same curriculum. So I'm going to say it again. You know, if we have a list of ninety-four people, I hope that we have more than one that has just the title of parent or grandparent.
Following on that, that comment. And you made the comment about the students having involvement. That was going to be my question, was at what point do the students in the selection process or in the evaluation process, do we engage the students in looking at the different? I mean, we've got some incredibly bright students and gifted students in math to help. And I'm not, you guys do great, you guys know exactly what, but is there, you talked about, you know, using it in your classroom a couple of times and kind of testing it. Was that before we selected or after we selected?
We actually had a teacher representative from every middle school come in and try both of our top-two resources with their students and then evaluated not only their feelings of the products, but also the students' feelings of the products to see which one they liked better. So it was a very positive experience.
I hinted that's where you were headed, but I wasn't sure how far it went. I think that's great.
I want to thank you two teachers for the time you put into this because, you know, you could be heading out the door at 3:30 every day. I know it's going to be a huge amount of time, but this is impressive stuff. Thank you. Great.
That's raw stuff.
Mr. Chodas.
Thank you. The district's property auto liability and crime insurance policies will expire on March 31st. The district's broker, Alisson Company, marketed the program at our request because we anticipated a hardening in the market. Twenty-four markets were approached and nineteen responded. All the responses were reviewed for coverages, deductible, limit options, and premiums. Contributing to the increase is the fact that the district's property values have increased by 10.9% over the last year. The current, the district's current carrier, Travelers Insurance, provided an option that will result in an overall premium increase of $62,000 or 7.2%, which will result in annual premiums of $926,054. And administration asked that the board authorize us to place the property auto liability and crime insurance policies through Alisson Company for the twelve months ending March 31, 2014. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I'm assuming this was an anticipated increase.
That this was an anticipated. We knew there was going to be an increase. The magnitude, we had to wait and see.
Is there a reason that the budget increase would be $92,000 when the overall premium increase is $62,000?
Yes, because we're a little short this year, so the difference is even more. We're making up that difference this year by moving some money, unspent money elsewhere.
As I talk to patrons and groups and everything about the upcoming levy election, they keep saying, well, all you do is ask for more money. We put six new boilers in and want to renew the insurance. And gee, it didn't cost the same as it used to, so surprise, surprise.
Okay.
Thank you, we'll vote on that.
I just want to make a comment. It has nothing to do with, fortunately, I won't be here the next meeting. I would have to abstain from this, just from the standpoint of contractual business relationship with one of the parties. So fortunately, I won't be here.
Okay.
That's.
Thanks.
After spending time with CJ Huff over the last week, Mr. Chodas, does this cover a tornado destroying at a hundred percent?
Nancy Reagan's, our risk manager, is in the audience.
At a hundred percent, every placement?
Well, we have a deductible.
That's on that part, yes, I understand that.
$50,000.
Okay.
Per building or per?
I think it's per occurrence, right? So if.
A tornado is one occurrence.
This room takes out several schools, and there'd be a $50,000 deductible.
Okay. So they get earned on it.
Hey, we'll vote on that next week. Several routine action items are on your board docs. We'll vote on those next week. We have public comments to address non-agenda items. Let me remind our speaker that the comments are limited to three minutes and will be timed by the president. It's inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name. If you have concerns about these, they can go to the appropriate administrative person. We have Matthew Hunter.
I would like to address the issue of a travel medical consent form. It says, "I further release and forever discharge the Springfield School District from any and all claims, causes of action, or damages resulting from son or daughter's participation in this activity." I have very strong disagreements with the words "forever." There's only one crime in Missouri that you need the word "forever" for, that the statute runs that long. When I refused to sign, my son wasn't allowed on the field trip. I'm not going to sign it more and more over. I cannot understand. I'm told it doesn't mean this, that my child's rights are protected. So what does it mean then? I don't see in here where it says it's making parents aware of any dangers. It doesn't say danger, Mr. Hunter. It says, "Mr. Hunter, you're not to be trusted with your legal rights." You people are very intimidating. I'm sorry. I don't understand how we got in this far. I don't, you know, if I don't sign this and I agree with frivolous lawsuits, that's the furthest thing from the truth. I vote legislators to make laws. If they make a bad law, I vote them out. I vote for judges. If they don't do their job, I vote them out. So is there something being settled outside of court I don't know about? That we need protection from? I mean, I've not heard of anything. I'm truly confused as to why I need to sign a "forever." Sure, my son's protected. I can bring a lawsuit in his name. But is the judge going to make me the one in charge of the son? He can make anybody. Criminal negligence, I'll sue the teacher. That was a suggestion made by one of the people I called here. I ain't suing the teacher, I'm suing the union. Because that's who will be representing them. The union get a court order, come in and get this document. Next thing you know, case law's out the window. That was cited to me. There's a case law. That's not Missouri law. My legislator didn't make it. Then all of a sudden, hey, we're sorry. Case law got changed in this case. I don't understand it. I'm 44 years old, never sued anybody in my life. Don't want to. But I do not want to sign this. And I'll continue to fuss about it. Hopefully, you'll change it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Dr. Ritter, can we have appropriate staff follow-up with Mr. Hunter on that issue?
We have to.
Okay, good, thank you. Legislative update. Anything we need to know about? Anything we don't want to hear about?
Where do they start? I'm going to talk about, you know, three things. One is, I know there's a whole, and there's people here that probably know more about this than I do with respect to the whole House Bill 631 and teacher evaluations that they're really messing with, Jeff. And I don't know where it's going to go, but, if it will go, but it's certainly an issue with respect to local control and how we evaluate our teachers and mandating how you're going to do that. And whether that will get anywhere or not, I don't know. I know MSBA is, they're not there opposing that, the aspect that, not the evaluation per se of having teacher evaluations, but it needs to be local control and no mandates with respect to this is how you're going to do it. So I know that's out there, nothing's been done, but it's being talked about and has been. The other one, the other bill that's out there that's kind of, and we've had a lot of discussion tonight about Common Core standards and doing that, there's a bill out there to eliminate Common Core standards in the state of Missouri so that we don't follow Common Core standards. Even though I think it's a done deal. But it's stirring things up with respect to the whole concept of Common Core standards. And I guess if you get rid of those, where do you go back to?
Isn't that a state board decision?
That was a state board decision.
Yes.
So I don't know where that's going. I don't know that it will go anywhere, but it's being discussed. And there's some more that I, I don't know all the specifics, but Representative St. Louis, that's kind of gone. Right now, I think his primary goal is to just blow up PSRS with the whole, making a defined contribution, no COLAs until it's fun, until, you know, your full liability's taken care of. And there's another aspect, I think, that's, there's like three bills, and they're all way out here. I hope they don't get heard, but I know he's upsetting a lot of people. And so just the process of the discussion is going to be bad enough. But he's the same one that's got the Common Core bill, to get rid of Common Core. So things are being stirred up. How far they'll go, I don't know, but.
Is he supported by recs? Is he, would you identify that? We all know, but would you identify?
Lamping.
I don't know.
Lamping.
I don't think.
From South County, St. Louis County.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think anybody wants to own him.
I can't say because I have not checked those records. I would like to check those records, but. But, I mean, it's just, I don't know. It's not for the sake of improving public education, most of the goals here, so. And those are the three, I mean, there's a whole lot of other things going on, but.
I went to legislative breakfast last week. The Senate met dealing with tax credits until about four in the morning, so they weren't there. Not a one of them made that. And anyway, I think they did make some progress on that, a little bit of progress on that as far, and they put a. as far, and they put it, they came up with a pretty staunch approach to tax credits and moved it over to the House, knowing the House is going to rip it apart and start over. So I just don't think there's going to be a whole lot happening legislatively with anything as far as education is concerned. There's going to be a lot of shaking, saber rattling going on, but I don't think much will happen until the very end, and then I think it's going to get down to how they're going to fund or what they're going to fund. And that's pretty much what I think's going to happen. So... Other than that, that's it for legislation.
Any future issues?
Well, tomorrow night's a big night. Kickapoo Pie played as well as a state champion last Saturday, beating, beating Nixa, and they both played exceptionally well. They play Willard tomorrow night at SBU, and so hopefully, they play just as well.
Good game.
Then the, and then Hillcrest is playing exceptionally well as well, and they're playing over at Ralla tomorrow night as well. And they're both, I think, one plays at seven and six forty-five, something like that. Anyway, those are two big games, and I think that's something that, surprising a lot of people, both of those teams, so. Okay. So that's all I have as far as future issues, immediate future.
I think the, I think we can probably set our budget planning session. It looks like feedback from board members, and here's how I might suggest we do it. It looks like the ninth is the best for everyone. This will probably be preferable to Mrs. Twitty, because what we have to, we have to do several things that night. We have to have an organizational meeting.
That's right.
We have to have a study session. And then I would recommend that after this, we forego strategic discussion in the study session. After the adjourn, after the board meeting adjourns on the ninth, then we can have a budget study session. Does that seem to work? So we have a...
After the board meeting?
Organizational meeting, a shortened board meeting, because there won't be strategic discussion, it'll be a study session, and then do a budget session after that.
Jean's going to stay for all those.
Yeah, she should be here for the duration, because she'll need to. But this would let our new board member participate. It might mean that we go till nine o'clock, but it looks like of all the dates on here, that's probably going to be the best, best date. So tentatively, I'll run it by, we'll, we'll kind of circle it through the cabinet and all that, but if we did it, we might even do the organizational meeting starting at five instead of five-thirty or something.
Could you just have the, could you have the budget session as part of the strategic discussion? I mean, I guess it's six of one, half dozen of the other, right?
Just, just expand it.
It'd just be a longer meeting, but have that.
Same way.
I think it's just really important that if we're going to have at least one new board member, that they be a part of that discussion, you know, I think.
Sure. Whoever that's going to be.
So you all kind of mull that over and, but everybody can...
We meet, yeah, tomorrow.
At least maybe plan on a longer meeting on the ninth, and we'll, we'll just lock the door so Mrs. Twitty can't leave.
We would like her input.
We would like her input.
I don't know if she would, really.
Maybe, as, as, as just as a citizen.
As a citizen.
As a citizen, yeah.
Well, she has to sign up to...
She can give it all in five minutes, it'll be a Jedi, she got five minutes. All right, other issues. Good. Remember your plus deltas, please. We need to go into executive session following the meeting to discuss real estate and collective bargaining matters, provided in section six-ten-oh-twenty-one-two and three, is that three or nine? Nine.
So moved.
Mrs. Callan and Mr. Lee.
I think that means I.
Did I just turn that on?
Vote it I. Oh, it was you.
That was me that went on.
This one's for Chris, this one's for Bruce, this one's for Tom.
Did you hear me, Tom?
What?
I said, except my husband. I think I was the first one, he's going for the last one.
Well, yeah.
He's taking me to dinner, and I'll...
Okay.
I'll be, thank you.
We'll call you when we need advice.